Welcome to the March 13th, 2018 Board of Directors Regular Session. We always start our meetings with the flag, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We apologize that we're getting a little bit late. We had a work session upstairs earlier that ran a little bit over, so sometimes things get a little bit delayed, but we'll make up the time. So we will start with an approval of our agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as printed.
Okay. It has been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica to approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? If you would like to approve the agenda, like Kim moved and Erica seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please say no. Okay, the agenda is approved. Wonderful. The first thing on our agenda is audience time. I don't have any request to speak cards. Do you have any now?
No.
If you do want to speak to the board, there are cards in the back of the room at the table. You can fill that out and give it to Val Valkman here, and she can get that to us. We'll just wait like a not-outward night time for us to see. Okay, excellent. All right, so we are really excited to have Mike McMurray here to tell us all about TEAMUP. So come on down. Welcome.
It's been a long time since I've said I'm excited to see Mike.
I am excited to see Mike McMurray.
First of all, how do I work this? Just pressing the...
I can tell you.
I'm technology challenged. I think I can do that. My name is Mike McMurray. I'm with the Hillsborough Hops. And I'm joined by essentially the TEAMUP team. Would you stand, please, all of you who are part of the TEAMUP program? I also want to give a particular shout-out to Crispy Pocky because if you have any questions, you ain't getting answers from me. We're here to provide you an overview of the TEAMUP pilot program. Now, I understand that you've already been provided some pretty complete documentation that should pique your intellectual interest. I'm here, hopefully, to appeal to you viscerally. If we do our job right, you'll be as excited about the TEAMUP pilot program as we are. Now, with that, what's the TEAMUP program all about? The TEAMUP program is all about reigniting a love of learning among students for whom the benefits of classical education are not intuitively obvious. We hope to do this by fostering community connections that help participants broaden their views of what education is and how that education can translate into maybe career opportunities or career prospects. Now, please pay attention to that word reignite because we'll be coming back to that later. This slide provides a summary of the objectives for the participating students. This program's intended for students that have been identified and then read as disconnected from school and/or their community. These are kids who just might not be getting the support they need. Now, you'll be pleased to know that I'm not going to read to you all of these objectives, but because I've got the microphone, I get to emphasize things that are important to me. Helping students see the value of critical thinking in math skills, math skills in particular, and how that affects their lives and how it affects their futures. Why is this important to me? I was a math major. I married a math major. I spent 25 years as an actuary. I'm the prototypical math nerd. But I was able to parlay that into a fairly good career. I was lucky. I was really lucky. I grew up at a time and in a culture that plays heavy emphasis on math and science. I enjoyed a natural motivation to pursue the maximum abilities I had. My observation anyway is that today's environment's a little different. Many of our students don't see the same incentives that I enjoy, particularly those for whom math is challenging. Sadly, this is happening at a time when critical thinking couldn't be more important. And we need to look at creative ways to maximize the math literacy among our students, particularly those who risk falling through, falling by the wayside. Analytics are for all students, not just for mathematicians and scientists. So how will TEAMUP work? This graphic shows you the key components. Evergreen Middle School will essentially be the laboratory for this pilot program. Daily classwork for the recruiter's students will be supplemented with exposure to clubs, with field trips and real-world experiences related to their studies, with community and career connections through exposure to other of our partners in this program, through math tutorials and enrichment, and through peer tutor support. When we were involved in the Math Warriors Program last year, the thing that I was so impressed with was how much the participants paid attention to their student mentors, their student tutors in the program. And hopefully, we can replicate what we saw there with this program. Again, the whole emphasis here is to help students who might be having problems with classical educational work, letting them understand and see where pursuing their education can relate to their lives as they see it, not necessarily as the way other people see it. So, who are the community partners? At this point, the partners we have involved are Columbia Industries, the Optimist Club, Dick's Auto Group, oh yeah, the Hillsborough School District, Burgerville, and my personal favorite, the Hillsborough Hops. Why are they involved? They all want to invest their time and resources in TEAMUP because it represents a unique opportunity for a public-private partnership in a way that involves something other than just asking them for money. The sole aim of these partners is to enhance the prospects of students who are in danger of falling through the cracks of the educational system. And honestly, I'm really impressed that most of these folks don't know each other, but they've come together with the TEAMUP program. It makes me feel pretty good. The next slide is what is it the community partners' level of involvement? It gives you an idea of the variety of ways in which these partners will be involved in TEAMUP. The partners may have different levels of participation, but they each share a common goal: to make education more relevant to students who really need a special kind of support. Before we leave this slide, I want to highlight one particular activity: School Events and Awards Night. Last year, we were so fortunate to have the opportunity to work with the Math Warriors in an awards dinner that was held for the Central High School Math Warriors. The event was awesome. We were able to recognize academic progress from among a group of students who frankly probably had not had that opportunity before. But most importantly, we brought their parents there. We brought their families there. It was really kind of cool to see these families have pride in the academic success of students that didn't have much. And I don't get that emotional, but I almost got emotional at that one. Now, I want to leave you with one final thought. Remember that word reignite. Some of us are stuck in the 70s. And one of my favorite Motown philosophers all the time were the spinners. "We look forward to fanning the spark of learning into flames of knowledge." Thanks for your attention. If you have any questions at all? Seriously, if you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as Mike said down there, Mike and Laura also started the day with us this morning at the school summit. And at the school summit, the Hops were recognized for their commitment to our students as well. This morning, we talked a little bit about their role as an anchor sponsor for the district, as someone that made multiple donations to various causes. And, you know, upcoming announcements, there's going to be announcement about some fields and that kind of thing. I'm not blowing the secret there. At least that much is out so far. But more than that, I think that's impressive, is that you donate your time as well. And that's impressive and appreciated. And the person sitting right next to you, Bonnie, with years on the board, and still when I'm out and about at schools, I run into him, whether it is delivering canned food for a backpack program or whether it is this particular program or whether it's funding causes that the Optimists can donate money for. The TEAMUP crew here is really an impressive group, and I just wanted to thank you for your efforts. I made a comment this morning that in schools, we used to have this philosophy that students do well if they want to. And we're working to change that philosophy to students do well if they can. And what I think the TEAMUP team is doing here is they are creating the circumstances and environments where students can do well. So I just wanted to thank all of you publicly for all of your efforts and for your commitment to our students. So thank you for being here.
I'll do it.
Cabinet members, if somebody's not getting a photo of this team with the best of that being here, we will be in so much trouble.
So come on, we gotta put a photo up.
Our photographer is six tonight.
Six photo.
This isn't awkward at all. We'll just get you ready.
We have to do it over again.
You can put it back in front of the podium. You can see her do this.
If we're on a school board, way over there.
All right. All right, we got you. Thank you guys.
Good job, team.
Thank you very much. We're going to move right along to the Human Resources Department with our Chief Human Resources Officer, Auntie.
Auntie. Yes. So good evening. See everyone here, Count of the Lanes, Chief Human Resources Officer. And tonight, I have the luxury of having three members of our Team of 13. Brian Hots, who's our Director of Life Skills Staff, Sadie Pewee, who's our Director for Classified Staff and Equity. And so tonight, we are here talking about human resources. So we had the opportunity to do a redesign for our logo, and we were able to work with Jane Sequenza, who is very talented in our Communications Department, to create this logo. And we wanted our focus to be on human resource, to staff, to community, and students. And we feel as though that our work connects all of those pieces together. We are kind of the first connection point for staff when it comes to recruiting, hiring, supporting them through their entire career. And today, we're going to be sharing some of our efforts as a human resource team, how we support students, staff, and the community. And we really believe that we do this through a lens of caring, leading, and growth.
So when thinking about students, there were three words that came up for us: committed, inclusive, and connected. So committed because we are committed to supporting students' success through the work that we do in HR. Inclusive because we've developed practices in our department that create inclusive learning environments for our students. And connected because we are connected to the needs of our schools, our students, and our community. So our work in HR always leads back to the students that we serve. We are in the field of education, and therefore, students are at the core of our decision-making, as they should be. So whether we are supporting our school or a department with their staffing needs, we have mechanisms in place throughout our hiring process where we are consistently keeping our students at the forefront. So for example, our job postings are reflective of this when we explicitly state in our job postings that we are seeking student-centered individuals who enjoy working with children of all ages. Our interview process is reflective of this when we present candidates with scenarios. And in that, we want to better assess their soft skills as well as gauge their level of judgment and their awareness when working with students. And we go through a thorough background and reference check in our process. And we do this because student safety is our first priority. We are student-centered when it comes to recruiting, hiring, and retaining staff. And we want to make sure that our staff members know our students by name, strength, and meaning. And finally, although we're physically removed from the day-to-day contact of students, we believe that we have a direct impact on their educational experience through the work that we do in HR each and every day.
And that's my part, thank you. So this framework up here supports our efforts as HR as we are with our staff from the beginning of their journey throughout their careers, providing opportunities for continuous improvement, building relationships, and celebrating diversity. It starts with recruitment, which is part of our strategic plan, is to hire folks who mirror our students. Last year, we were able to increase and celebrate, we were able to increase our diversity of our hiring by 3% from the prior year before that. Our HR not only supports the recruitment piece, but once we get them recruited, the hiring process, our new employee orientation, licensure renewals, tuition reimbursements, the evaluation system, loan forgiveness, summer employment mentoring programs, professional development opportunities, and much more.
Community. This is all centered on how we want to be connected and involved in our community. We recognize that many of our staff actually live and work in Hillsborough. And so one of the things that we really have tried to focus on is becoming more involved, supportive, and engaged with our community. And so we have spent time volunteering, beautifying, like Buttercup Creek and transportation. And we've spent time in the Jackson Life Skills Art, doing an art project with Jackson Life Skills students, and then also attending the Career Days. And you'll see us at Proud to be HSD, attending all the job fairs in the metro area as we work with local universities to recruit licensed staff. And then we posted a transportation job fair and also a classified job fair for recruitment. So, this is my favorite slide. We have 2,673 staff. We are the lucky 13 that get to support all of the staff in our district. And we consider it a privilege to support each of our classified licensed, super tech, and administrative staff. We consider it an honor to be with our staff throughout their retired career, from their first day on their job to when they retire after many years of service. We consider ourselves to be the lucky 13 who get to care, support, and make a difference in the lives of each of our 2,673 staff. And that is our presentation for tonight. So, wonderings and learnings. Things that you wonder about each one, things that you've learned. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Travis, come on down. First, are you reading the high school course proposals? There are a lot.
Thank you very much. Again, a pleasure for me to introduce several new courses for first reading tonight, new high school course proposals to be offered if they were to be approved by the board from the 2018-19 school year. I just want to quickly go through who's here, and then we'll invite folks up in shifts to go quickly through the slides and explain where we're headed. So contrary to what that slide says, we have Becky Kingsmith here tonight. She's our Coordinator of Secondary Teaching and Learning and an honorary member of the Citizens Curriculum Advisory Committee. She shows up almost every time now. New courses to approve. Kayakizer, Kim Bliss, Courtney Leonard, Melissa Pendergrass, and Brian Pendergrass from Hillsborough High School. Thank you for being here tonight. And Martha Geis and Michelle Gray from Century High School, as well as Rebecca Nelson, who's here as Vice Chair at the CCAC. Linda was in a seat today, and she couldn't be here, so thank you for being here too, Rebecca. She can characterize our conversations at the CCAC over the last several months as these teachers have come through and made comprehensive presentations to the Citizens Curriculum Committee, and they have moved these courses forward to you. Tonight, we're going to hear proposals that include four additions from Hillsborough High School and one from Century High School. The first one that we'll hear tonight is an extension of our work to support freshmen transitioning into high school. Several of the courses are extensions of our Career and College Pathways work and AP and IB course offerings. And the final one also is an expansion of our ability to teach and learn in Spanish at Century High School. So excited to introduce folks one by one or in groups. Our first contestant will be Mr. Brian Pendergrass. You've met in the context of biotech, bioscience, but he is also a person who helps coordinate student leadership in helping new freshmen transition to high school. So Pendergrass, come up here.
Hi. So I'll go down quick. So the Link Crew class, it's a leadership class. It's a full-year-long program. And like Travis said, it's geared at helping our freshmen transition from mid-depth transition from eighth grade to high school as easy as possible. The class, it's one year long, and it is centered around organizing activities and events... Oops, wrong parts. Organizing activities and events for our freshmen. I sort of refer to it as leadership-like. Traditionally, the Link Crew class has students who don't really picture themselves as being leaders on campus, whether they're just shy or just don't feel like that's them. I'm proud to say that every single year that I've taught Link Crew, the year after I've had students, at least one or two students has either run or successfully won election to some student council position. I've had students tell me in the past that they found their competence by being in Link Crew because we practice a lot of students about public speaking. You have to stand up in front of your 10 freshmen four or five times a year and talk. And that's something that really, it doesn't seem like a lot from adults or a teacher who does it every day. For some of these kids, having four or five chances to stand in front of 10 people and sort of demand their attention and get their respect, it's a really big deal. So you've read all the stuff that's on there. I want to tell you this real quick story that sort of illustrates the perfect situation that happened a couple weeks ago at Hill High. I'm sure it had a sort of social media blow-up that sort of took a small controlled situation and made it much bigger than it needed to be. The administration came in and talked with the Link Crew class last Monday. On Wednesday, the Link Crew class worked together to plan an activity for the freshmen. And on Friday, they ran an activity with all of the freshmen, the entire school, around what can go wrong when you spread rumors via social media and how to sort of think before you just retweet or start blowing things out of proportion. So yes, the Link Crew class is geared towards helping freshmen academically and help them join clubs and connect with the school. In an ideal world, it really helps to adapt to whatever the freshmen are needing, whether academic, social, or whatever. That's my pitch. Thank you very much.
Is it okay if we wait for all the presentations, then we'll circle back with questions? Okay. So I'd like to invite the whole crew up to talk about IB offerings. So welcome.
I think I'll start. You want to stand there? You can. Macai, you can be my backup in case something goes down. So where am I? Okay. I have been given sort of the marching order to try to explain what IB is in about 90 seconds, which is a tall order, but I would assume that some of you may know what it is and some of you may be completely new to it. So I'll just assume it begins from the beginning. IB stands for International Baccalaureate. It's a comprehensive, rigorous, academically rigorous college preparatory program that we offer at Hillsborough High School. We have the unique sort of honor of being the only IB school in the district. We are certainly not the only IB school in the state nor the world. There are 20 other IB schools in Oregon, the most recent of which is the New School in Beaverton Mountainside. I always say Riverside, I personally understand. In addition to that, the closest ones are Sunset, Southridge, Beaverton International, Cleveland. So we are also not unique to globally, right? We're connected also to a global network. So what we are offering tonight are sort of our presentations tonight. Now, some of you may be familiar with AP, and IB offers a lot of the same advantages that AP does. Our students have the opportunity to test at the end of either a one- or two-year course. Depending on how they do that, they can access college credit. What we love about being an IB, or personally what I love about being an IB school, and this is our 15th year as an IB school, we were sort of an early adopter. IB goes all the way back to 1968. And actually, its origins are in the students of diplomats in Geneva. We're looking for some way, because they move so much globally, to have a curriculum that they can access wherever they want. And that has reached all the way to the United States in 2018. So we, I just lost my train of thought there for a second. Oh, so it does have some of these opportunities, right, that AP has in terms of the extrinsic benefits. What I love about IB is that deep sort of in the gene pool of IB is that we care really what kids know, but in the mission statement is also a concern for who our kids become. So we are really committed to creating globally-minded, critically-thinking citizens of the world at Hillsborough High School. So what we are offering tonight is really a slate of three courses. Right now, we offer an IB diploma. Those are our graduates that take six IB classes. They test in those classes, they complete a 100-hour service project, and they also take a class of all-theoried knowledge, which I teach, in addition to writing 4,000-word research paper. So that has sort of traditionally been one of our career and college pathways, is this is our academic pathway. What we are doing tonight is presenting a slate of three courses that would integrate our other career and college pathways, such as public service, business management, as well as sports science, with IB capstone courses. So it integrates two programs on our campus. And in addition to that, it also gives every kid that chooses a career and college pathway the opportunity to take and test in that class to access college credit in addition to like our dual credit offerings. So we are offering three new classes. There are a few... Oh, actually, the first one is Disavengerance. That gives me a break. I'm going to do the stand-in for the other two teachers. One of them actually is realistic tonight, and the other one is trying to get here from softball, so we'll see if she can.
Hello. As Travis said, I'm Kayakizer, a teacher at Hillsborough High. The class that I am representing is IB Business Management. And... Just a few of the highlights here. This class would replace the .5 credit capstone course in Business Management that's currently being taught at the school. This course would be a year-long course. It would encourage... exploring business issues, ethics, from different cultural perspectives. So, I feel like it's a class that would build on the things we're already doing in our Business Capstone course, but really expanding it and like Mr. Bliss said, bringing in a lot of that IB DNA that I think will make this a real, you know, to use a business term, a real high-leverage situation for students. I also really am excited about the potential partnerships with community members, not only paying people like the Hillsborough Hox, but also other businesses here in the community, you know, small and big, and getting, part of the process here is the students at the end of the year do a review, kind of analysis of a business, whether it be local or international, and look at potential solutions to problems that the business might be having, realizing how the business has had success. So, these are kind of opportunities for kids to apply their learning as opposed to, you know, just reading about some case study about some far-off place. So, I used to teach the IB Business Management capstone way back when at Hillsborough High, so this would be a return too for me personally to get back into that class.
So, I'm going to stand in for our global politics teacher, Julio Gallion, who's sick tonight. The other course that we're offering is Global Politics. It would be the capstone for our Human Services College Pathway. What I really love about this course is, as one of the previous speakers with the vote, I was saying how important it is to think critically in the future, where we are right now. And this course offers students to really think deeply and critically about their role as citizens of the United States, but also as a global community. And one of the capstone pieces of this course, which I think is really incredible, is that there is a political engagement activity that students are required to engage in, which requires that they demonstrate the skills and understandings of political science that they have learned over the course of the year. They choose a political issue that they believe in and that they care about. They research, write, and present about that issue, but that they also engage with that issue as well. So, it's built in, it's called the internal assessment, to that course. I think it's going to be a beautiful course to offer, and Julio's a really wonderful, caring teacher, he'll do an amazing job. The other course that we're offering is IB Sports Exercise and Health Science, which will replace our Sports Med, the capstone of that Career and College Pathway. So, again, this is a 1.5-year course. It's called an SL. So, in IB, they distinguish between the Level of Course, which is the difference from AP as well. AP has a slate of courses that are all one-year-long. IB either offers a SL course, which stands for Standard Level, that's a one-year course, or an HL course, which stands for Higher Level, which is a two-year course. You take the Higher Level course, you get access to more credits in college, but it is also more comprehensive, more rigorous, and covers obviously more time, 240 hours of instruction. So, the Sports Exercise and Health Science Program offered by IB incorporates an understanding of kinsthesiology, physiology, anatomy, and all the things that are already there, but then it also builds in practical work. So, one of the things I think that's so beautiful about the IB program and curriculum is that no matter what class you take, the philosophy is that you will participate in the practice of that discipline. So, our history kids write history IAAs, or Internal Assessments, they have to write original piece of historical research. All of our Biology and Chemistry kids have labs, practice work that is assessed as a component of the course. So, you want to demonstrate that you have an understanding, but that you also can apply those skills practically. So, I think this also will be an amazing course. It also offers kids the chance to get college credit when they test at the end as well. And Stacy Arson is wonderful, she's built the program, and she'll be fantastic in that role as well. So, those are our three courses.
Thanks, guys. Sure. And Brooke and Kelly were here, they want me to comment, but this course too is one of four health sciences programs around our district. So, you guys probably know Rochelle Carnes, and Yvonne Atop, and Melanie Lewis, who do health sciences at our other campuses. And this one has a special flair around sports medicine, so kind of a cool specialization at Hillsborough High School for our health sciences programs. So, last but not least, thanks guys, is Michelle Gray from Century High School, who's one of our wonderful Spanish teachers, to introduce AP Spanish Lit and Culture.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. In order to give our students at Century High School the opportunity to earn an extra four college credits, we are proposing the addition of AP Spanish Literature and Culture to our current 17 AP offerings that we have at Century. Over 90% of our students who currently take AP Spanish Language, which we already offer, over 90% of them are Latino. But roughly 2/3 of them are not seniors. We needed additional course to offer our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors at an advanced level. Our first group of students in the Dual Immersion Program will arrive at Century in 2019, and the AP Spanish Literature class will align nicely with the Spanish Lit class that they are currently taking at Brown Junior High. And finally, and I believe most importantly, this class will provide many of our students the opportunity to explore, analyze, and interact at a very high level with a variety of authentic texts in their first language, Spanish.
Rebecca, can you talk about the CCAC?
Hi, everybody. Hey, guys. So, I'm very honored to sit as the vice chair at this CCAC, and it exposes us to so many wonderful conversations. And I just have to say thank you to all of the teachers, because it is, probably it just makes my night every single time I get to look into a course proposal, because it's very obvious how much you care about the students, and you sit there and you think, what else can I offer? What else can I bring to the table? How can we get farther ahead? And as a parent and a community member, I'm so appreciative that you continue to just explore what else kids can learn and how we can make them a stronger community member. So, in the CCAC, some of the discussions, I'll keep it very brief, just about what we focused on or what they have focused on. Basically, all the parents are very excited. We want access, whether our kids are in the Century theater, the Hill High theater, Liberty, or Glencoe. We want to know how our children can access these programs if they're not available at the other schools. So, like you mentioned, Interbaccalaureate is offered at Hillsborough High School, but it's not currently offered, you know, at Liberty or Glencoe. So, how can we tap into that? You know, obviously, we have the AP classes available, but I love that point of going beyond just that college credit and really looking at how students are becoming as a person, how they're going to find that place in the community. We also talk about pre-rex, making Spanish literature. It came up, what kind of base in the Spanish language would you need to take as a course? How fluent do you need to be? How would you, I guess, grade that? What can benefit? And then also inclusion in all of these courses? How can everybody access it? How are we any of the people who aren't signing up for them right now choose to be involved? And so, those are the things that our parents are asking. It's opened up deeper conversation for our parents in including how we can look throughout our course catalog. We actually spent some time at our last meeting looking at that, how we would read it, what kind of resources are available. We did find some opportunities that we can improve communication between parents and school. And so, I guess, what was really, one of the things I was just so grateful about these classes, not only just listening about what's coming, I'm excited for my boys that they're going to have these opportunities to pick from so many different areas, and that children who maybe don't see themselves in some of the regular paths that we've had in the past, they know that there is a spot, and they can find something that fits into their passion or to their interests, and that they know that wherever they're going to go after their schooling, that they have support. A little bit, I'm sorry, sorry, boy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so the committee voted to offer all these courses to you for consideration for 30 days, and I just wanted to echo what Rebecca said. Thanks to the teachers and administrators here who supported the whole process of putting these courses together and then testifying in front of a group and refining what it looks like, and I appreciate your effort and the passion for students. Thanks for creating these opportunities, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board has about specifics.
Jackie, can you hear that? I have a question about the Link Crew. It says that it's a course modification and that it's currently in its fifth year, so what's changing, I guess, in, you know? I read the whole thing and I thought, I didn't know what it is now, so.
So, when it was created five years ago, it was put under the Leadership Two title, because that title already existed, and then why go for this one? We just started to use it as Leadership Two. Hill High did not have at that time a Leadership Two class, so it became the Leadership Two class. Next year, our leadership teachers hope to actually teach a Leadership Two class, and so they needed to be separate entities, and thus the Link Crew needs to be approved as a core course title.
Perfect. Thank you.
I am always really excited to hear these presentations. My favorite thing moving into board session, again, is that students that are going to be high schoolers, and it's just so exciting that they're going to have opportunities that I can, and thinking back, when I was a school in the Spanish, you could only get to a certain level, and then there was no more challenging courses. I love this idea of culture and culture being offered, and also the IB program. I just wanted to commend you for bringing that idea and pushing for that thinking of four students behind, and not just what we offer, but really thinking about them as future global citizens and opening your eyes to the possibilities that there are, because the world is a much smaller place now than it was. So, I just wanted to applaud you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Jackie asked my question, so I wanted to say that. No, good question. I can just echo Erica said, these courses are incredibly well-thought-out there, academically rigorous, and kind of, like, for anybody watching the video, it was like three. I need to hear who wants more information in the publicly available board packet. There really details what everybody's going to have to do in these classes, and it's just, I feel like reading it, I almost got a graduate credit. If you take this class, you should get graduate credit.
Martin?
Question or comment promised to everybody. First of all, the idea of reading Jose Martí in Spanish in high school just blows my mind. That's just totally awesome. Yeah, so kudos for that. For the IB Crew, you're awesome. My son took full IB, and now he's deployed to Afghanistan, and now he's terminated Iraq, doing global politics, and so the IB program is profoundly influential. Yeah, I want you to know that he graduated in 2007, full IB, and it was like rockets on what came next for him, so a little feedback there. And Rebecca, for the CCAC, thank you for coming this evening, and I share, it makes my night. Yes, we're totally jazzed, I love that. And to all the teachers and administrators, it takes guts, you know, to really step out and create a new program out of whole cloth, and that's exciting, and I commend you. Thank you.
My question is, I'd like to ask Mr. Bliss. I'm just curious how many students in Hill High, I know it's not a large number that do the full program with a diploma, but how many students access an IB course?
So, that is a fabulous question. The answer is a lot. We have the highest number of, so you can, the distinction is that there's a full IB program, those are the kids that take all six, then there are course offerings, so I'll card. This year, we have the highest number of testers, we're offering over 340 tests, I think almost 90 kids are testing. So, those are across the junior and senior year. But we have about 180 juniors who are in various IB classes right now, and then I would say almost an equal number at the senior year. There's some attrition that goes over the two years, but yeah, so there's a lot of kids that access at least one. You know, the message from me always is, sort of like I push into sophomore classes, is that if you're thinking about going to college, you need to be reflective and be intentional about which IB course you take, but this is our college preparatory program, right? It's important that you challenge yourself academically in at least one area. So, I think we've seen results from that message. Kids are being selective about it, and with the new offerings, also it enables kids that, you know, Kayakizer, our IB econ class, a lot of kids, a ton of kids access that because they can take IB econ instead of econ, right? So, it might be their one class that they challenge themselves in. But I can send you some data to react to.
I just had a follow-up question on, I know that some of these are, so what are we doing to kind of advertise these to students? Because a lot of times, they hear from older siblings or families, or kind of like, oh, you teach this class, this is really fun. But what are we doing to advertise to the, you know, up-and-coming freshmen or sophomore?
Or sometimes they hear the opposite, right? Like, oh, don't take that class, sorry. I'll let Courtney take that, because she's here, yeah, go for it.
Hey, I'm Courtney, I'm one of these principals at Hill High. It's a great question, and it's something that we learn about a lot, simply because having an IB class as a capstone for our pathway is, not that it's new, but because it's expanding, we really want to continue to have it. So, at the end of February, we had a really well-attended academic planning night for families. Our council was pushing the classes to talk about the new offerings, and really our best advocates are not only our teachers, who are going to teach in the process, and they're really excited about them, have captivated some of their classes. We also have current seniors who are talking about their process and their pathway. We're getting our juniors and our sophomores really excited by saying, wow, I really wish they could have had that opportunity.
Martin?
Thank you, manager. Sorry to go again. I got so excited about IB, I forgot to ask my question about that.
So, Brian, I do have a question for you, and Michael set you on a straight path afterwards if I lead me down the wrong path, but is there a possibility that the Link could be also a reach to the eighth graders that are rising, get them like jazzed about coming to Hill High as, you know, matriculating and sort of having them hope?
In the past, we have actually made trips to South Meadows. I don't think we did it last year, but we did it two or three years before that, so it's something that we've done in the past that is, I think, a great idea.
I would echo that, and it sounds like an expansion of the program into new territory, and I think it's also needed, frankly, that we get kids jazzed to do this part.
Yeah, I agree with that. Another thing we're doing with some of our Measure $98 is an 8.5 summer prevention program, which takes some students who we think would benefit from the summer experience to get ready for high school, so that might be a sort of pre-match-making opportunity for some of the Link Crew to interface with students in the summer. Dale, do you have anything to add to that?
I think it's a fabulous idea.
Thank you, Dale.
Yeah, we have a couple more questions. Mark?
Yeah, the Link Program, it seems like it's a course credit that upperclassmen take, like, I like the class they take. Do the freshmen enroll in this class, or is it just the freshman class benefits from their activities?
The freshman class benefits the activities. The way I look at it is that a lot of, you think of student government, right? They run a lot of events, they have, and the elected officials are like the leaders of the student, the greater, larger student community. Within Link Crew, we have about 80 to 100 Link Crew leaders every year. The class usually has between 20 and 30 kids, so they're like the leaders of the Link Crew. So, they organize the activities, and then a lot of Link Crew leaders aren't in the class, but they're still dealing, helping us deal with the 400 freshmen we have. So, it's sort of like the elite of Link Crew, if you want to say. They plan everything, and then the others sort of follow them, follow their lead.
Right. I think those are all our questions, that is, I get to have a turn. Course proposals are always going to be great. Probably heard me say that, I'm really excited. I'm particularly excited about the IB courses, because I have two future Spartans many years down the road, and my expectation is that they'll be able to manage these courses. I'm very excited. And I have a plan on my children, five and six, and they will be taking those classes soon. So, we're very excited for them now. So, thank you guys so much for your work, and also Rebecca up with the CCAC. I'm a big CCAC fan. I miss it a lot, but always really excited when it's going to come and take us up. So, thank you, and name is Travis. Good job.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Okay. Michelle, you are up next to the financial report. I don't know if people will clap for you, sorry.
Dale said she would.
I'm practicing, I'm already practicing.
So, in the board packet, you will find our monthly financial report. There are some highlights in here of, again, an example of how we're supporting principals as instructional leaders, what we're doing here, the administrative center black box, where people out in the links might think that we're seamlessly, we work together all the time. We're just doing everything we can to do that. There's also been some impact to the business office just due to the bond, a little bit of extra resource to manage, and, you know, Adam's transition, my transition, so there's a little bit here on some staffing transitions in the office as well. Special thanks to Jeff Jones for really stepping There's also been some impact to the business office just due to the bond, a little bit of extra resource to manage and, you know, Adam's transition, my transition, so there's a little bit here on some staffing transitions in the office as well. Special thanks to Jeff Jones for really stepping up during all of these transitions. The other key finance manager in our office has been out on leave and so he stepped up to help support her team while she was out as well as continue on with his work until his replacement. So special thanks to Jeff. And as far as our cash flow report, I'm happy to any questions you might have about it. I just wanted to note that 83% of the general fund is staffing. So every little thing that our wonderful human resources department does from recruiting to training and supporting staff as they go through the district is so important because that's where, that's where the money's at, quite frankly. So special thanks to them. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
We'll do Udira and Martin. Did you, was it?
Oh, sorry, just kidding. She's like, why are you calling? Martin.
Michelle, I didn't want to ask it during the context of the new course proposal, so I didn't want to kind of nitpick, but one of them I saw actually needed a stipend. So is that in the, if, if the course proposal is approved, does that mean the stipends approved?
Not automatically, we do have stipends in our bargain agreement or extended contracts. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're funded. So that would be at the discretion, I'm sure, and advocacy of the building principal and working with HR to get that set up, but it's not an automatic thing.
Okay, so that might be a nuance we bake in, Madam Chair, to our, our course proposals that we, if we, if we endorse it, that we're really endorsing what it takes to do it. Because I don't want to needle the staff about, you know, where's the maximum funding they propose.
And just a clarification about our process with the course proposals, when they, by the time they've come to the Citizens Curriculum Committee, they've gone through the site council of the school, the district administration, we have a plan for textbooks or software or, so it does come up in the Citizens Curriculum Committee, like how are you paying for that and what are you paying for that? And we just, we sort of discourage that conversation. It's really not the job of the CCAC to get into those weeds, but instead to approve the purpose of the course and support the administration and the teachers in offering the program. So, I mean, I always value the question, like, help us think through, is this worth the investment? But usually it's, I don't know if it's the, if the board wants to get that deep in the weeds on each of our course proposals. The costs change over time once the course is approved and so, I mean, it's something to consider, but it's baked into what comes to you as we got this sponsored. Does that make sense?
We'll see. We have some other people who want to speak, so let's wait and see. All right, so Jackie and Kim.
I know exactly what you're talking about, Martin, because I asked the same question, but it does say that because it's been in its current state for the past five years, there's no additional FTE required, but that is a very good point.
Still, not FTE, but initial bonus of the FTE.
Kim? Just from, from past course proposals, some of them actually do come with a big ticket and we have as a board kind of mowed through them. Not all of them are an expansion of what already exists and so I do think if, if it's either a whole set of textbooks that don't exist or specialized training, like when we went to Avid, that was, of course, Avid was a course proposal that had a large ticket item to it. So I do think there are times when, I'm not as concerned with small stipends that are contractual, but if you think, sometimes it is important to know what are the sources, the resources you need and, and the board, past iterations of board have spent some time going through those and asking some pretty pointed questions about what are we giving up to make that happen and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'd be happy to put in like a, like a, sort of a small budget breakdown for things so that it could be more clear and you don't have to sift through the whole thing to find that. We could even add that to the slideshow. I just wonder what level of detail y'all want to get into when it comes to those decisions.
It also sort of depends on the year, quite honestly, as a board member. Sometimes 200, you know, 100 books that cost $200 each feels a little differently than other years.
Correct.
So I think knowing it can be helpful.
Martin and Martin?
I hate to keep bringing it up in this section, but it's in this section, but our student incidents have skyrocketed.
I know. Leah came to me earlier today to discuss this to me. She said that for your next board report, she's going to add a column where it differentiates again the 911 type incidents from the head banks and the companies that were getting reported. I do know that it's, it's the number of incidents total that our staff is being trained up and we're reminding them to capture that information and you guys just haven't seen it disaggregated yet. And so that will be part of our April board report, so watch for that.
But even if we're comparing apples to apples in the same year, it's almost double from the previous one.
Yes.
So it, without any change in reporting from one year to another.
Other than the growth of people doing it, so there would be initial training and over time as things have happened, it's become more a part of a regular process for people to do reporting. Michelle Brady, who is in charge of our district safety as well, has been working with Leah on this. And so I'm, again, I'm pretty sure that it is, it's the amount and accessibility people have to an easy electronic form to submit these incidents as they happen and the descriptions of them. So I think the ease of reporting has done a lot to these numbers and I think the disaggregated data is really going to show that for you.
So, so we don't think the feet on the ground would say that January was twice as bad as December?
Right. Not necessarily, not in terms of extremes. We have had more school days this year. So, you know, the more days of school, there would be also more incidents that have happened. So I think it's a combination of those things and I think we just need to bring you some more details.
My, my question actually was on the stipend, but to continue Mark's commentary, I think it is more than double and so if we're going to report these numbers, we just have to know that when something more than doubles, that's, that's got to be a red flag, otherwise why report the numbers at all. So I agree with Mark that there's probably a story that needs to come along with something like doubling of an incident report number. But back to the stipend thing, I don't know if there's a way to kind of let us know when we're sort of below a threshold, that it's just green lighted and we can absorb the cost like if it's one stipend or, or on the other hand, the, the budget issue needs to be talked separately because it really, we really can't do it as proposed without a budgetary trade off or impact. So there would be some sense of where we are financially, that would be helpful. Not necessarily the full answer, but just some sense of if it's doable in the short term or it's more of a budget and do it later type thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Moving back on.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, so policies for first reading, we're starting with Elaine. Come on down or stay there, whatever.
I didn't receive any questions, so.
Okay. Any questions now for policy G, the EB and the AR?
This is a pretty straightforward one.
Looks like, well, good. Thank you, Elaine. All right, and, oh, are they all you? Oh, okay. Okay, so what about HCC and the AR one and, and two? All good. Okay, all right, all good. Thank you, Elaine. Okay, everyone, so we are now at our consent agenda. So that means we're looking for a motion.
We have heard the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Okay, so if you would like to approve the consent agenda as Jackie moved and Kim seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please say no. Okay, the consent agenda is approved, is printed and we are on our action items with the Bond Oversight Committee members, 8A. Does anyone know the page number on the packet?
119.
120. No, wrong one.
Mark's right.
Okay, that's closer than where I am.
I brought names down.
Excellent.
Do you want a motion first?
Yes.
Do I have to read it in a certain way?
I think that if you would like to, you could say you would approve the slate of names that the board agreed upon during the work session and what all the members in the minutes. Is that sound all right or not? And then separate motion?
I'll just do the, I'm going to say the names since there are people in the I, it's many were upstairs.
Okay.
So the motion I'd like to make is to approve the 11 candidates on, for the board over, the Bond Oversight Committee. Those candidates would be the student and I'm sorry, I did not write down the student's names.
Thank you.
Thank you. The 10 adult members, Kevin Zurker, Patrick Preston, Maureen Barnhart, Peter Brandon, Matt Buckingham, Matt Costigan, William Caleb Ford, Polly Lobison, Sonia Marie, Lika Wahana, Ackman, sorry, Jeffrey Jonathan Seraphoff.
Second. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie to approve the slated candidates for the Bond Oversight Committee. The 11 votes we discussed upstairs, it looks like there's some discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say the obvious, but it needs to be said that there were a lot, every single person that put their name and brought a lot to their, their offer to serve in this capacity and it was a tough decision. One of the things that guided, I think, me and several of the members of the board was, was taking this opportunity to bring more people into a committee. So there were a number of people who already are serving and so we looked at people who aren't already serving and that was influenced some of us. So if you're, if you're not on this list, please don't read anything into it other than the fact that we appreciate you've been willing to serve and we hope that you continue to serve in, in other ways.
Is there any other discussion about the appointment of committee members? All right, so it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie to appoint the slate of 11 votes to the Bond Oversight Committee. If you would like to approve that slate of votes, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Those 11 votes are appointed and then we're looking for another motion for chair and vice chair.
I move that we appoint the members to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for, do you have names or can we say?
You just need to do the two for chair, vice chair.
Yeah, just that means.
Okay. I would, I'd like, I'd like to make the motion that we designate Matt Buckingham as the chair of the Bond Oversight Committee and Patrick Preston as the vice chair of the committee.
Okay, it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica. Appoint Matthew Buckingham as the chair of the Bond Oversight Committee and Patrick Preston as the vice chair. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. So Kim moved and Erica seconded to appoint Matthew Buckingham as the chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and Patrick Preston as the vice chair. If you would like to make those appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, and they are appointed as chair and vice chair. Thank you. Okay, we will now discuss the revisions to the calendar again. All right. Or we'll maybe just load on or?
Is this where we're going to rehash what we talked about upstairs, just an overview?
You know, it might be good just to have it on.
Oh, for the record.
They're very brief.
Okay, very brief. So we presented three different drafts and these were the main things that we focused on. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving would be a no contract day, revising the dates of winter break to correlate with neighboring districts, adjust the end of the year and moving it away from Monday, June 17th, 2019 to the previous week. And finally, looking at readjusting potential implement weather makeup days so they appear in the school year. So it appears as though the board, through some discussion, is looking at draft three, which would include the Wednesday Thanksgiving break and then winter break would be two full weeks, starting on December 24th and finishing on January 4th. And then the last day of students would be Friday, June 14th with time for licensed staff to potentially return, but they can also work during that last week to finish up work. And then the implement, possible implement weather makeup days would fall outside of the regular school year on Tuesday, June 18th and Wednesday, June 19th.
So then we are looking for motion to approve draft three of the calendar or do you want to discuss now or after the motion? Now?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve that three.
Oh, excellent. Wonderful. Excellent. Okay, so Martin has moved and Erica has seconded that we approve revisions to the 2018 school year calendar adopting draft calendar three. Is there any discussions now?
Yes. I would just like to say that I, as a board member, received a lot of input, a lot, closer dozen, and I think most of us on the board received probably the same dozen. And they, they all requested that we read, that we take a look at this. And I would like to commend Connor and the staff generally for receiving these requests and inputs and very thoughtfully deliberating and considering a lot of factors about, you know, impact to staff, quality of educational days and really, really coming back with a very thoughtful and I think really well crafted adjustment to the schedule. And further, just speaking as one individual, I think my preference would be to stick to a one year look ahead, but that's probably a discussion for next year's board. But thank you, Connor, for the work that you've done.
Just thank you to our community representation who helped give us some feedback as well and our apologies as someone who was here and voted on the past calendar, this mic set upstairs. Maybe because we were making the decision in February and we had cut nine school days, we were a little, I don't know, calendar crazy. So our apologies for, for having the last day of school on a Monday and so I appreciate everyone's flexibility to rethink that and be willing to put in more time around it and hopefully we don't cause too much distress to families who have looked ahead that far.
I'll echo what Kim said. I, when this was first rebrought to our attention weeks ago, when we looked at the, the adopted calendar, the first thought that we had in the document was what were we thinking? Why would we do that? And I also would like to apologize. I, I, the only explanation is the one that, that Kim said that we didn't think is that we were just so distraught about all these surveys, we just assumed we would have more, so we made a rash and not great decision about our calendar. And then I also definitely, I heard what, what, what you said upstairs about changing an adopted calendar, not cool. I, I think in this case, we, we really kind of have to improve the horrible calendar to be adopted, but I also think that from our discussion last month, we've decided maybe not to adopt a calendar so far advanced so as not to cause distress in the future. So hopefully this is an appropriate solution. We'll, we'll see, but I agree with Martin about a one year, one year look ahead. Okay, all right. So Martin made the motion and Erica seconded to approve the revisions to the 2018 school year calendar selecting and adopting draft calendar number three. Any further discussion? Okay, if you would like to adopt draft calendar number three, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, so draft calendar three is a really adopted calendar. If you're not going to change begin, don't worry. Adam and Casey, awarding contracts.
The first, we have three different contracts to coordinate for Bond. The first one is for the site work for the turf fields that are going in at Glenco High School in Hill High. You remember back in January 23rd, the board acting as the local contract review board, allowed us to put that out a bit for this work. We have gone through the RFP process, interview process and tonight we are recommending that we award that contract to Vern Hartgolff to do the site work at Glenco High School.
Any questions for Adam? So we'll do the first one, the athletic fields.
We award the contract for site work services for Glenco High School and Hillsborough High School Athletic Field Renovation Projects to Vern Hartgolff.
Second.
So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie to award the, nope, yep, moved by Jackie, sorry, and seconded by Kim to award the contract for site work services for Glenco High School and Hillsborough High School Athletic Field Renovation Projects to Vern Hartgolff. Is there any discussion?
Woo-hoo, turf.
Alrighty, so if you would like to award the contract for the site work services at Glenco and Hillsborough High School Field Renovation Projects to Burnheart Golf, like Jackie moved and Kim seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right, that contract is approved, to be awarded. Anything additional to this here?
Not on that one. We have another contract to award. This one, back on January 11th, the Board acting as the local contractor board authorized us to go out and bid for CMGC contractor to construct the replacement building at Brookwood Elementary School. And tonight, we are here to recommend to you, and we had an interview team that included four of them, so thank you, Martin, for coming on this process, but we would like to award that contract to LCG hence construction. And we're very excited.
I had a lot of fun, it was a well-run process, and it was, thank you for letting me participate.
Yeah, we had representatives from the district, we had our architect involved in the process, we had a construction manager propose, and it was a really good process. We got five really good contractors to propose, and we have a lot of assistants to help us with.
May I make a motion?
You don't have to push your button to make a motion, you can just jump in and do it.
I move that the Board of Directors award the contract for CMGC services for the Brookwood Elementary School replacement to LCG hence construction.
Second.
Great. So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Jackie to award the contract for CMGC services for the Brookwood Elementary School replacement to LCG hence construction. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to also say that because we have so many projects, and it's, we have a lot of opportunities to participate, it's a really great experience, and if all of us could participate sometime in the future, I think it's just, it's just good. I want to echo what Martin said, that you make the process really great, and the consultants also make it really easy to follow, so thank you for that.
Okay.
My, my comment is just that Brookwood is our neighborhood school, and we're very excited that you get it updated, so we'll bring that project.
Okay, all right, so Martin made the motion and Jackie seconded to award the contract for CMGC services for the Brookwood Elementary School replacement to LCG hence construction. If you would like to award that contract, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, thank you, that passes. And now we are on the third and final contract of evening's dom.
We can do either one.
Come on down, or not dom, maybe.
This is our private way. I don't have a microphone, so I'm gonna come up. So, I'm here to present for you and ask for the approval for the contract on the RFP that we let out to build the dark fiber ring around the district. Before we get into discussion, I just want to be, try to be fully transparent in this process. As we worked through the bond by committee, two, two and a half years ago, we got some new base pack, and that's what we built a budget on. This number is higher than that. We're not looking for anything other than outside of bond processes or figuring out what we're going to afford it. But I just want you to know that from what the bond had initially budgeted at 9.25, that this contract comes back at 13.9 million, which, when you look back two and a half, almost three years now, when we got some of those numbers, things do get more expensive as we come forward, so that's where we're at. Just wanted to be transparent and not front with you guys with that.
I think the mark.
So how, where's that coming from?
So, we, we have a couple of different paths that we can go down. We already have some cost savings and the technology bond that we can look at, and some, if we do some targeted bond work, or we can look at, we're currently in the process of going down the E-rate path. And if we get, which this is a Fiery One funded, and we would give money back from E-rate for this, so we can cover that. There are some implications with that, but we're going down that route, which is why we've kind of pushed this pretty quickly so that we can match up with E-rate timing for this. We have to have a contract in place by March 22nd for this to qualify for E-rate.
Okay, now may turn this direction, no offense. Michelle and Adam, are we comfortable with this being over that much over what we originally targeted?
I have made Don sign in blood that if we don't do the E-rate option, that we will have, he's got a $31 million technology bond budget.
Okay.
If we spend $13 million on this, that there will be other pieces of it that we have to either include in some kind of other funding source, or we'll have to postpone some of it.
Thank you. It's not that I don't trust you all, it's a question a little bit after the community, and I need to make sure.
And I can sit here with reasonable assurance and say that none of this will come out of any sort of general fund money support, any of the things that would impact operations of either the technology department to support our schools and our classrooms, or the overall general fund money.
Good, it's gonna happen.
I know. That's why I can easily make that statement up here.
So Mike's gonna jump in.
Sorry, Mike.
Don, would you spend some time explaining a couple of different things, why we could go this route? And this is an investment over how many years? Could you talk about that?
Yes, so first and foremost, I'm gonna take the longitude of this, because when you start talking about building a dark fiber ring around any sort of an area, some of the transcontinental ones that Comcast or larger providers have tend to be a 20-year. Because this is a shorter haul, this is about a 30- to 40-year investment. So this network that we've put in place will be here for a really long time. So the decisions we make now, when we look at this, will have a very long and large impact. The other reason why we're gonna go down this road is, since I've been here for five years, we've watched our bandwidth double year over year, every year, and we're now at about a nine-month span before we need to double our bandwidth. Because of doing that, if we just kept on our current Comcast rates to try and get to where, we're gonna start off with an initial 10-gig fiber network, we'll recoup that $13.9 million under this current contract, and if we were paying light dollars, I'm sorry, it tilted on me, that's about a five-year, if we just stayed under this contract. Now Comcast did provide us some better pricing, where our own dark fiber network and their new pricing intersect in about 16 years, but that's still less than half of the time that we're gonna own this, and Comcast would still charge us year over year over year after that 16th year. So our recoup is gonna be massive on this, and we'll be able to have unlimited bandwidth. It will be an insignificant cost. When we need to move from 10-gig to 40-gig or 100-gig, it's not even a percentage point of the $13 million that we've been paying, it's just fiber optics on either end of the switch. That would upgrade that speed and make that capable.
So, Mark and Jackie?
Hit part of my question. I understood where you're getting at, but yes, the bandwidth numbers that we're talking about look astonishing by today's standards, but so did a T1. But yeah, the point is, we're making an investment in something that's easily expandable without having to go back for capital spend.
And depending on how we do this, E-rate or straight self-provision and using all bond funds, we have the ability to build in some healing, so we can actually make it a true ring and have redundancy all the way back through. So if I hit it and hit a telephone pole and take out part of a fiber, that fiber signal will just get brought back around to that way, so that those schools aren't impacted. So there's lots of moving parts in how you consider how we go down this road.
My second question is, is the overage the reason why the motion needs to be only specific?
How?
We haven't generally mentioned the price in any of the other motions, and the motion language suggested here, it's only specific down to the.
I, that may be me, because Val and I worked on this pitch together, and I was just trying to be clear upfront in how much it was gonna cost us. So I would rather you have all the numbers rather than guessing at what I'm trying to do in the background.
I can also say that part of the reason you haven't seen hard numbers in some of the other bits, when we award a CMGC contract, part of that is that we're releasing that contractor to go out and bid the project, we'll come back to you with hard numbers on these projects, we just don't have them yet because that's the CMGC's job. So in this case, we actually have hard numbers, which is.
We did a couple, like, two sessions ago, where we do the actual number, a couple smaller projects, where we do the furniture maybe, and we discussed it during discussion time, but it wasn't part of the motion. So I'm curious, did.
That's, that's, that's just me.
I think there's two things, Donna, you direct these, and then the other, we want to be super transparent. This is above what we expected. We feel like, we've had a lot of conversation about this with our bond team on Thursday. Donna and I tackled that one, and then we've tackled ours, but we feel like over the long haul, it's not worth it to provide the capacity that we're going to be able to provide. So we just wanted to be super transparent.
And I'm hopeful, I've got nine days to go back, I mean, this is awarded the contract, but there's still a discussion period, so I'm hoping to come back with maybe better numbers.
Can you explain what E-rate?
E-rate is, if you've looked at your telephone or long-distance or cellphone bill, there is a Schools and Library Commission, FCC, charge that you get, that goes into a federal pot back in Washington DC. Our free and reduced lunch numbers impact what we can get. So our, right now, we're sitting right around 47% of FRM, free and reduced members, in the district, which is what we could apply for for a project like this.
Okay.
So, with all federal programs, it comes with rules and regulations about what you can do, and oftentimes, what those are and what makes sense in the real world, don't quite line it, but in terms of design and how you build something out.
So we're looking for a motion now to authorize the administration to award the contract?
I would like to move that we authorize the administration to award the contract for the construction of a district owned and maintained fiber network as defined in the RFP to Hinkles and McCoy in the amount of $13,940,965.35.
Second.
Great. All right, so it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Martin to authorize the administration to award the contract for the construction of a district owned and maintained fiber network as defined in the RFP to Hinkles and McCoy. Is there any discussion? Okay, all right, if you would like to authorize the administration to award the contract as moved by Mark and seconded by Martin, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, administration is authorized.
I feel like we need to applaud for yours.
This is huge. This is, this is the game changer for the district, and I'm so excited. And I'm also, I will go on the record saying I am equally excited and terrified, only to say that it's a big project, but it's gonna be incredible, so.
Okay, all right, that brings us towards the end of our agenda, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule. We'd like to welcome up our HCU and HGA.
Hi, Jill Galley, Education Association President, and first off, I wanted to say thank you for, the union really appreciates that the Board is asking for our input on things like the calendar, and now it's time for HR and the associations to still work together with those folks that were planners and book travel and things like that around the old calendar, but we are optimistic and will work together and come up with a solution. I just wanted to share that March 2nd was Dr. Seuss's birthday, and I had the opportunity to read to a kindergarten class at Lincoln Street Elementary School, and it was just wonderful. I loved getting into the classrooms. And then I also, on behalf of the teachers and the association, took a basket of Dr. Seuss books to the quality hospital, and gave them to the nurses there in labor and delivery, so that the moms and the littles could take a book home, and it was from us at class, so, you know, as we can, give them books in the hands of their parents and the children. So, May 26th is our 5K fundraiser, and I think it's our fourth annual 5K, and each year, we have, it's in conjunction with Bates and Forest Grove, it's Washington County 5K that the, Washington County, which is the four locals put on, and the elementary or Hillsborough High School can apply for it to participate in the 5K and get the proceeds. And this year, the recipient is Butter Nut Creek Elementary School, and so this is your invitation to join us on, on May 26th for the 5K fundraiser, and we're looking forward to, a lot of you, now I know a lot of you do every year, and want to say thank you, so this is an invite to the new 40 members to join us, and I just want to say thank you for what you do, and I really appreciate you having the face.
So, I should remember to introduce myself, 700 from Hilton University United. I just wanted to start off by saying that the way that we went about devising this calendar, I think was really well done and handled. We had input, it's always interesting that Connor was able to get raw data from administrators, and I felt just being able to sit down with Jill in the same room and talk through this was, I think, a difference this year than what we've had in the past, and I think it makes a difference when both the unions can sit together with HR and talk about what the concerns are. Because I think of things that Jill does, and Jill thinks of things that I don't, and we don't really get each other's thoughts, nobody gets them. And we work together really well, because we spend time to be a good team, and that's something I see in the HR staff and even the first floor, because it's not just HR that is critical to the success of this district, it's business office, payroll, benefits. And what I always recognize with that staff is that if they don't do their job, we don't have staff. They have to do, like, when you look at the arc of work that happens for a staff member, the very first thing in the applications office and receiving all that stuff, and the HR giving all the hiring processing and making sure all their paperwork, is set up just so they can walk in the door and help kids, and drive a bus, or teach someone something new. And I'm always amazed by the teamwork that that group has, that when troubles come up, they're all just jumping to help out and to solve problems. And I think that teamwork was built through deliberate action. I think the HR team and here at the admin center, the different floors, we spent time working on our teamwork. We spent time building social capital and trust with each other to know that, you know, if someone comes to technology and says, hey, my account is messed up, or I have a problem with iVidions, anyway, can just walk down the hall and talk to someone in HR and work out that issue. And, and we know that we can trust each other and really be able to work together to solve problems. And that's something they don't necessarily always see out in the buildings, they don't always see in kitchens, or in life skills classrooms, or even in the bus yard. It's very hard for classified folks to find time, especially the 10-month employee, because they're not here during the summer, they're not here during the breaks, that's their off time. And I think over the last couple of years, because of the budget crunch that we've had, we've been really, the number of discretionary hours that principals have to dedicate towards team-building activities is very minimal, and it shows. People have issues with each other, that there's, you know, those interpersonal culties that show up at the schools, and unfortunately, those usually end in complaints and investigations, and people saying, I'm fed up and I'm leaving for another district because I can't stand it here. And I hate to lose staff over something like that. We have awesome staff. It is a joy to come to work. Our kids are amazing, our students do wonderful things, and I would hate to have a disagreement that I have with someone else, or a beef that I have with my coworker to prevent me from being able to ensure that every student succeeds in this district. So, I ask that we find a way for supervisors to give time to those, those groups of staff that work together every day to do team-building. You know, it could be a half hour every so often to really learn about each other, to build that trust, so when things get tough, they have someone to watch their back. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will be brief, just a couple of little things. So, tomorrow, we do, we do know that, at least at our secondary school level and at our elementary school, there are students that are planning to participate in a nationally organized walkout, and that's supposed to occur from 10:00 to 10:17 in the morning. And just know that the district, we're not promoting this with our students, but it's also, it's also apparent that we need to do some good planning around this because we know it's gonna happen. And so what that means is that we will be facilitating student safety during that event. That means that we're going to either. That means that we're going to have adults who are supervising. We have, we've communicated pretty thoroughly with all of our staff members, with our administrators, our administrators have worked with their staff. We put out a joint letter with the union presidents and we tried to provide as much information as possible. So I anticipate that I will be updating you tomorrow throughout the day and letting you know how things are going, but our expectations are that the students will handle this in a very respectful and responsible manner. And I will keep you posted on it. Next thing is, we had the school summit this morning. Thanks for everyone who was able to attend. Always a good opportunity for us to highlight some of our students and some of the programs that are taking place. And it was fun to watch our students and to hear about the programs that are benefiting them personally. Danny was one of our speakers and so she was a big shot this morning, so we appreciate you participating this morning and sharing your story as well. And then finally, I'd like to, speaking of big shots, Yudira, your name badge and your business cards are in, so your official match.
Can we give a round of applause?
Very handy anyway, like if you're going to fill up with gas, just put that A.
You won't get it just here.
How about like when you come about to get like a parking ticket or something?
Yeah, just pull that.
Yeah, just pull that out.
Pull that out.
Thank you. All good?
All good.
Alright, where do you want your sound to start? Jackie, where do we go?
I want to thank Devon and Jill and Connor and all the other of you for having purposeful conversations about the calendar. I'm glad that we can have those discussions. I think it's important to include the people who live at the most center. So I think that that's important, so thank you all for that. I got to read at McKinney Elementary, second grade class, ugh, it's wonderful. And I stayed a little bit after and those kids are just, I just forget, like they're teenagers, right? It's such a whole different world when you have teenagers in college and high school. It's great to go back and just see the kids and they're so excited to see you and they're happy to read. And there was one second grader that was reading a chapter book and I was like, wow. And she was really reading it, not just fake, you know? So that was really fun, that was really fun, I really liked it.
Mike, I'd just like to add my voice of support for the preparations that you've made for this event tomorrow. It's going to happen and everything you've done has been sensible and prudent and I commend you and the whole district team for, you know, being smart about this. And I would encourage all the voices in the room to just, you know, encourage our student leaders to keep everybody on campus. That will keep everybody safe and secure. And I think that provides a venue to make the statement that they want to make and be safe and secure. So I'm hopeful that that is what transpires. And Yudira, I was chatting with a school board member in the David Douglas School District and they knew all about your appointment. And I was stopped on the sidewalk in Hillsborough by a friend of mine who lives in Cornelius, and he knew about your appointment. So that is the, edges of the Portland metropolitan area are aware of your appointment.
She didn't remember me yet.
That's why. Yeah, so you're making a big splash in a wonderful way, so welcome again. Thank you.
I also read second grade at Refill, that was really fun. And what Jackie said, sometimes you forget how adorable they are when they're so little. And it was really, really fun. And the other thing I wanted to mention was that we have some listening sessions for the high schoolers. And I think we've done one and then we had to reschedule somewhere because of scheduling for snow, I can remember. But one of the things I wanted to see, if there was a way of having either like a Doodle Poll or like an Excel sheet that shows who's going to which one so that we can kind of make sure that we have enough coverage for the rest of the high school. I know that I'm going to be not available for one of them, so I just want to make sure that we see that who's going so that we have enough coverage. And also, I think the other follow-up was that we were going to have the notes from the students, someone for all of us to have access to them and maybe just to see where there's overlap, like where the same thing is being mentioned in different schools and then what, so we can have access and then we can decide what to do with it.
Just want to echo what other people already said about the, again, tomorrow, there's lots of public information available and there's also, we've been fortunate enough to see a lot of the private information. I can assure the community that we are very well-prepared, at least as prepared as we can be for something like this. So we're all doing the very best. Staff, administration, faculty, ours all doing their very best to make sure that this goes off without a hitch and everybody remains safe. Also, the summit this morning just reminded me of what incredibly talented kids we have in our district. Last year was the Liberty Jazz Band, this year was Century, we had the Mariachi Period. So just continue to be amazed by the incredibly talented kids we have in this district.
I'm glad that I understood some of the adjectives today, so progress, progress has been made. And you know, the more I learned about all the different things that the district is doing, the more amazed. I mean, I already knew it was a great district to begin with and it's just even better.
I also enjoyed Dr. Seuss Day, it's my favorite day of the year. It's also my daughter's birthday, so it's always a party day. And I also got to go to Refill, I went with Kinders and it was really fun, I went to one building. But the, Refill is just so excited about what's getting ready to happen at their building. So there was just talk about, you know, people around here measuring and there's things happening. What can we do with the reclaim wood floors that are good? They're just so excited. I was sorry to miss the summit today. It landed again on the culminating day of Right Brain Initiative, has an annual event where they showcase their work. And so that's where I was, my day gig. But I was proud of Hillsborough, once again represented us really well at that event, sharing work that happened at Jackson Elementary in third grade with African drumming. And then claywork had happened at North Plains. And those students had had this experience of spending a great deal of time and thought in their work and having kiln malfunction and their projects melting. And so really talking about perseverance and moving on because they came back and had to redo that work. And the teacher giving them space and time for that was really great. But they were super well-received and represented our district well today, so.
Okay, so if you forget how adorable little kids are, I always have a couple gifts that you can use. Anytime, just let me know. I'm really excited about the 5K fundraiser for Burnt Creek. I've gone to almost every event, I had to miss last year, but I've gone to all the ones before that and I'm really excited. Will give me an excuse to start running now, yeah, get ready, so thank you for that. That's a little kick in the pants to get going. I did not get to read on Dr. Seuss Day unfortunately, but I'm hoping to be able to make it next year. And I'm really excited that we made up our timing when we started looking, so I don't really have a lot more to share. But I think that's all I'm going to say, I mean, we'll just, we'll be done early. So thank you everyone for coming and good night. We'll enjoy it.